Good evening. I'm Jean Hairston. I'd like to welcome you to our March 6th Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees meeting. We apologize for the few minutes delay, but we had a little technical difficulty. And after Dr. Michelle King and her student leaders in the Pledge of Allegiance, Dr. Luckett will introduce our guest who will bring our moment of inspiration.
All right. Good evening Superintendent Murray, Board President Hairston, members of the board, audience. It is my pleasure to introduce little Miss Raven Griffin. Raven Griffin is a first grade student at Isible Elementary School. Although Raven is six years old, most people who know her believe that a much older soul lives in this little girl. For a six-year-old, Raven has a much more mature comprehension of her world than most of her peers, and her reasoning and intelligence are off the charts. Raven is a princess, little princess, at heart. Like many girls, Raven loves bows in her hair and bling. When she served as Miss Isible Elementary School for 2016-2018 school year, it never phased her. She wore her crown and gown with dignity, and she represented her title well. Raven is a self-starter. However, she is just as content spending time alone as she is socializing with others. She does not hesitate to express her opinions, and they are usually spot-on. She is also very observant, so she is the proverbial little teacup. She has a wonderful sense of humor and quite often has her family in stitches with laughter. Raven is a scholar who loves to learn. She enjoys reading and comprehends extremely well. In addition to reading, she loves to sing. Raven can often be found in her room alone with the colorful butterflies on her ceiling using her karaoke machine singing and dancing. She's a very happy little girl. She likes spending time fishing with her daddy Clarence, but she loves cuddling time with her mom, Robin. Ladies and gentlemen, Miss Raven Griffin.
Can everybody please put your right hand on your heart? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And joining her are grandmother, mother, uncle, and a friend. Thank you.
Thank you.
We know that all of your classmates at Isible are very proud of you, as your parents are and we are as well. Thank you for joining us tonight. Next, Dr. Luckett will introduce our...who will bring us our moment of inspiration.
Madam President, I have the pleasure of introducing Reverend Charles Pepper, a native of Jackson, Mississippi. He's married to his lovely wife Stephanie Pepper. He graduated from Murrah High School, our own in JPS, in 2005, and then attended Mississippi State University, receiving a bachelor's degree in industrial technology and a minor in business administration in 2009. Reverend Pepper is currently enrolled at the New Orleans Baptist Theological Seminary and is pursuing a Masters of Divinity standard with a concentration in youth ministry. He's currently employed with Eaton Aerospace of Jackson, Mississippi as a manufacturing engineer, and he also serves as a youth director at New Hope Baptist Church.
There are three kinds of givers: the stone, the sponge, and the honeycomb. The question is, which kind of giver are you? To get anything from the stone, you must strike it. Yet all you generally get are chips and sparks. The stone gives nothing away if it can help it, and even then only with a great display. To get anything from the sponge, you must squeeze it. It readily yields to pressure, and the more it is pressed, the more it gives. But you must push. To get anything from the honeycomb, however, you must only take what freely flows from it. It gives its sweetness generously, dripping on all without pressure, without begging or bashing. But also, there is another difference in the honeycomb. It's a renewable resource. Unlike the stone or sponge, the honeycomb is connected, you see, to life. It is the product of the ongoing work and creative energy of bees. If you are a honeycomb giver, your life will be continually replenished as you give. And as long as you are connected to the source of life, you can never run dry. When you give freely to your students, you will receive in like manner, so that whatever you give away will soon be multiplied back unto you. Dr. Murray and the members of the Jackson Public School Board, you have the awesome privilege and the wonderful opportunity to pour into the lives of our students each and every day, to not only propel them into a better future, but to make them better people. For it was Lord Boehm who said, "Education makes people easy to lead but difficult to drive, easy to govern but impossible to enslave." I wouldn't be where I am and who I am today if it wasn't for the educators in the Jackson Public Schools who poured into me, especially my mother, who is present here today, who taught at Callaway High School 12th and 11th grade English for six years. And God's gift to me, my lovely wife. Because of her, I am a better man. Sweetheart, please stand. May God bless and keep each of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Let the record show that all six of our currently appointed board members are present, and we have established a quorum. Item three, adoption of the agenda. Board members, our agenda was distributed earlier. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, we have adopted the agenda as presented. Item four, public participation for comment. Attorney Turner, do we have any?
Yes. Board members, you have several folks who've signed up to address you this evening. First is Carol, I think it's either Redfield or Rodfield Mims, would like to address you regarding inclement weather.
Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Murray, Board.
Good evening.
The Jackson Association of Educators was surprised to learn the school district's decision regarding employee time and pay due to the inclement weather. Therefore, JAE is writing to request that the JPS School Board review and amend its resolution to dock time and pay. In January, schools closed due to the inclement weather and low water pressure. There was not a systematic plan in place for this, and therefore, many JPS employees lost personal days and pay. Additionally, this caused a payroll nightmare, placing many employees in a financial bind. We ask that the district immediately reimburse days and pay that were wrongly deducted, to draft a policy that will provide procedures for accommodating staff members' pay and days due to city emergencies and inclement weather, and to increase the number of personal days for classified staff. We sincerely hope that this request for JPS to review the given facts and resolutions shows that Jackson Association of Educators is committed to advocating for fair treatment for all employees. We would like to know that our district is willing to work together towards a resolution in this matter. In solidarity, Jackson Association of Educators. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next is Anique Kirk-Gian, VR workshop for JPS, 14 students needed immediately.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening Superintendent and the Board. This spring break, we have an incredible chance to be able to offer 14 JPS students to attend a free immersive VR, virtual reality workshop. However, we need your help. These students will learn how to create their own virtual real...oops, excuse me, sorry. Hang on one second, I'm sorry. These students will learn how to create their own virtual reality, and by the end of the week, students will be qualified VR guides. They will be testing their new skills by hosting their own virtual reality on the last day with Jacksonian tech supporters attending, including the mayor's team and numerous educators amongst them. Unfortunately, we've been struggling in trying to be able to get hold of 14 JPS students, and we're getting rather nervous, to be honest. The spring break, the spring break is in three days' time, and we only have three students. This is an incredible experience and opportunity for 14 JPS students to have. They will be leading the way in the opportunity of virtual reality here in Jackson. I will quickly give you six reasons as to why we are doing this, why we are bringing this to Jackson. One, companies such as UPS, Walmart, Jaguar, Farmers Insurance, many, many others, are already incorporating VR into their standard practices. It is a fast-moving and has...the demand for creator...creators, sorry, is high. Two, the starting pay in this industry is about $50,000. Three, the VR students develop transferable STEAM skills and disciplines such as design, coding, texturing, animation, graphic design, just to name a few. Four, it attracts an accessible...and is accessible to both boys and girls, which is important as the world of tech can often be alienating to girls. Five, one can create VR for a client in Hong Kong and be still sitting here in Mississippi with their family. And six, it's the future, and it's cool. And that is what Jackson and Mississippi are trying to embrace, is I believe, hence the mayor is supporting this. Could you help us with finding 14 students for this spring break workshop in virtual The students of today need to be taught the jobs of tomorrow. Virtual reality is here now and will be a giant tomorrow. Thank you for your time, and thank you for helping us, or considering to help us, I should say, bring this incredible opportunity to our young Jacksonians. Thank you.
Last is Sharon Willis, shortage of bus drivers.
Good evening, interim superintendent, board members. I come to you this evening to speak to you concerning the shortage of bus drivers. Drivers on a daily basis are given multiple routes to fulfill because of the number of bus drivers needed. The question is often asked, why are so many people leaving the district? And the answer is around this time, we tend to lose a lot of drivers. Drivers are leaving because of number one, not enough money. Number two, drivers can hardly meet the cost of living. It was this very boardroom that Mr. Calvin Lockett had the bus drivers at both north and south terminal to report to. Drivers were told by Mr. Lockett that this is where your faith lies, and this is where a decision was made for you to have a job. And if you had to come back to this boardroom, that you would not have a job. Drivers were also told not to base this job as a cost of living, because he would be...a lot of overtime would be cut. Bus drivers are pretty much afraid to go talk to anyone above Mr. Lockett as far as the chain of command is concerned, because drivers were also told by Mr. Lockett that if they went spoke to anyone concerning Mr. Derrick Williams or anyone in transportation, that he...and he found out who you were, he would make sure that you wouldn't have a job. He told us if we talked to a board member or anyone, you would not have a job. I drove buses for 13 years for Jackson Public Schools, and I went out on hardship. And on October 27, I put in an application to come back. It's to my understanding that Mr. Williams would not allow my application to be pulled before we hire him. If you have a shortage of bus drivers and you have people applying to come back, why are people being denied to come back? I know individuals such as Dr. Murray, Sandra Lowes, Derrick Williams, and Calvin Lockett would tell you, "I am a vulnerable and angry ex-employee." Not true. If the board members, as well as those individuals' names that I have mentioned, would sit around the table along with the JPS attorneys and have a meeting, you would be surprised at the things that you'll find out. JPS have...JPS also, they will tell you that I have an attorney. I don't have an attorney. I don't need an attorney. I can represent myself. Board members, the bus drivers are asking that you would meet with them as a whole, and you'll find out a lot of things that the bus drivers are going through is not permissible when it comes to the staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
That's all.
Item five on the agenda, the review of discipline cases. Dr. Bishop Knox.
No, we have no cases.
Item six, superintendent's reports and announcements, the STAR data presentation.
Good evening, Board, members of the community. Tonight, we would...we would like to provide for you a brief data presentation on our STAR data. A couple of months ago, well, about a month ago, we provided information on summative data from Benchmark 1 testing, and at that time, we shared with the board that we would provide information on STAR testing once that process has been complete. As you all know, we have a clear process for assessing our students. We have formative assessments that we...we have seven formative assessments a year. We have two benchmark assessments, and then, of course, we...our universal screener is a STAR assessment. And so, we use that to track growth. And so, at this time, we're going to ask Ms. Amanda Thomas to come up and provide a brief presentation on our STAR data.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent, Board President, and Board members. I've been asked to provide a brief overview of our STAR data, so as we go through the slides, you will note that the first few ones are participation rate for fall and winter, so you do see comparisons. You also will note that on that last column, you see the difference from the fall and the winter. This first one is the reading. With the participation rates, we do have an expected goal of 95%, and that is due to what is expected by the state. So, we do try to mirror the expectation of the state, because schools receive points for participation rates, or they could be penalized if they do not have that designated participation rate. So, you will note those proficiency differences as well. The goal is at the 40th percentile, and that is the most common percentile used by educational professionals. So, if you look at those columns, you will see that. And we'll just let her slide through those. The next set of data is the proficiency outlook report, and this is for elementary and middle schools, because they are the ones from third through eighth grade that take the MAP assessment. So, you will see again the number of students, the proficiency level for those students, as well as the proficiency for the winter screening and last year's MAP 2017 data. So, those last two columns show you a comparison of that. If you would take a moment to look at them. So, again, this data with STAR, the STAR benchmarks are determined by linking STAR with our state assessment. So, if students took the MAP during this winter screening, which was January 16 through February 12, this is what they would have scored on the MAP test. So, when you look at this comparison, that's what you're looking at. So, please note that this was taken January 16 through February 12, and we still have a few more months in school, so we anticipate that our numbers will increase by May. If you look at the comparison, you will note that many of the schools are where they were at the end of spring last year. So, please look at that closely. Another key point with the slides is that this is the comparison of proficiency rates for third through fifth grades for elementary, sixth through eighth grades for middle school. So, these are not individual students, it's not individual grades, but collectively, because when you look at the state proficiency reports, it is going to be collectively for the schools. The next set of data are scale score comparisons. So, when you look at scale score comparisons, when students score within a certain range, then they will be proficiency level one, level two, level three, which is passing, level four and five deem that they are at that appropriate proficiency level, and that's where we get those points for reading or math proficiency. So, we would like for our students to score in level four and level five. When you look at the scale scores as well, you will note that we have green, because the expected rate would be to exceed 50 percentile, and we have the red if they are below the 35th percentile. When you look at the expected student growth percentile, they do fall between 35 and 65. So, that's what we did the comparison for as it relates to the schools. Again, you see the scale score change from the fall to the winter for reading and math. Again, this is for elementary grades three through five, because they are the tested grades, middle schools six through eight. Again, you see the range there. As we look at the data, and we know that you're looking at numbers, we do want to make note that the numbers are attached to individual students. They're attached to teachers, and they're attached to individual students. So, the next set of data that you will see are actually reports that the schools can gather. This is a state performance report, and it is a particular class at a middle school. So, you do see that the scale scores are there, and you see that the students are listed, although their names are blacked out for identification purposes, that they fall on that pathway to proficiency. You also note there's students that fall below the pathway to proficiency. So, this is a state performance report that the schools can pull.
Ms. Thomas, can you speak to how the schools get access to this information, how they're trained on...how your department works with them?
Okay. So, the STAR, the Renaissance Suite contains several, several reports, not just with STAR reading, STAR math, early literacy, also houses accelerated reader, accelerated math. Training was provided to administrators, interventionists, and teachers the last couple of years. And they can also contact personnel within the MTSS office to receive additional training. I've offered training at particular sites. Those persons within the building have the logins, the credentials to access these reports within their building. So, again, this is a particular class at a middle school, and it gives a breakdown of those students.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
The previous slide. So, the scale score tells if they are on the pathway to proficiency or below proficiency?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
No, I'm...this is some new information that wasn't in our packet, so that's why I'm trying to understand what this is. Let me ask another question while I think on that. The January...the winter test administration is January and February. The fall test administration, what months did that?
August, September.
August, September.
It ended September 12.
And will there be a spring assessment?
Yes, ma'am.
Does this...what does this data tell us about the anticipated spring assessment? Are you getting ready to go there? And when is it in the spring? What's the...
The dates in the spring are April, May.
April, May. Okay. So, this data that you have on the screen now shows the students who are proficient or below proficient. Does this tie back to instruction or class objectives or...
Yes, yes, ma'am. And actually, I have another slide that even breaks it down further. But within your previous data, you did receive the state standard scale scores, and so I was just trying to show how students are actually attached to those particular numbers. So, for example, within, I think, the first student below the pathway to proficiency, there has a score of two, is it 219? 219. Well, this is an eighth grade student. So, in order to be within the proficiency range, you need to have at or above 1,277. So, that's why that student is performing below proficiency. If you look at that.
So, where would that teacher find help to work with that student?
Yes, ma'am. So, as...so, if we would get to the next slide, I have a breakdown of standards. So, it even breaks down even further. This is another screening report. Again, you see the green bars, you see the blue bars, the yellow bars. You're going to see those different levels as well. This is actually a third grade report. I was trying to show Variety Middle School and Elementary. Again, you see those at or above scale scores as well as below. If you just slide it. You'll notice well that students are attached. So, basically, the staff members are able to select a group of students, and then they can determine which proficiency level those students are in. This is a particular class, and this is where they are scoring. As you...as we go through the various reports, you will note individual reports that give specific skills and concepts that the students have not mastered. So, that's when you'll get closer to proficiency. This is another snapshot of a class and what the teacher will see. So, this is an individual report. Parents receive this report as well. I know that was one of the concerns. So, parents receive this report, teachers receive this report. It's going to be specific to that student. You see the scale score, the percentile ranking, grade equivalent, the... You see the scale score, the percentile ranking, grade equivalent, the instructional reading level, and then notate the domain score. So it tells you specifically how the students are scoring within those particular domains and standards. So it gives you specific guidance on what you can work with, with that student. This one as well, teachers pull this. It is an instructional planning report. So this student, and I chose because it's individual, this student, of course, is above grade level. It's a third grade student. So on the side, it says seventh grade, eighth grade, and so forth. If the student was below grade level, it would designate exactly what range to begin servicing that student. So if you had a second grader that had not mastered pre-K skills, then on that side, where you have the grade seven, it would have pre-K skills that you would need to start at. So this is actually an instructional planning report that teachers can utilize to assist students in the classrooms. We also utilize these when we are grouping our tier-two, tier-three students. Parents as well receive instructional planning reports so they know how to assist their boys and girls at home. It gives very specific steps. Okay. This is state standards. So again, estimated mastery. So you were saying the outlook, the proficiency outlook, the beginning to the end. So at this point, the third grade student here appears to have mastered many of those standards. The standards are listed, and it has the range. If the student had not mastered, it would fall in that yellow, which is below the estimated mastery range. At or above is the dark green, and then, of course, the lime green is estimated mastery range. So each student can receive this report. Teachers can pull this report for each student. And you see that the standards are listed, that the children have mastered or not mastered at this time.
So this is a report for one student, and they identify each?
Yes, ma'am.
Identify real-life connections between words and their use.
Correct. And administrators, teachers, interventionists within the building have the rights to pull these reports, and they've been trained on how to pull these reports. This will further guide instruction. The next report is a parent report. So again, you have specific things that parents can do at home to assist their boys and girls. It will state that clearly within the different sections. There's instructional reading level, as well as the percentile ranking. So the first one was a reading, and then you'll see a math score report. So it will name specific skills that the student needs help on. And this one just says decimals, fractions, more practicing with fractions and denominators for this particular child. So the overview is the numbers, but then when you drill down and utilize the reports in STAR, it can get very specific for the students.
When is this data available to the teachers that gives the specific instructional?
As soon as the students have tested, they can go to the system and pull the report. Yes, ma'am. That same day.
I was going to ask a couple of questions. As far as the outlook report and the overall, the attachment of the scores that we received, level four and level five is considered proficient, and anything below that is not proficient?
Correct.
On the attachment we received, it indicates that the fall 2017 and the winter 2018 proficiency in reading for third through eighth graders in the fall went from twenty percent proficient to eighteen percent proficient. For grades three to five in the fall, it indicates that it went from twenty-two percent, and this is district-wide, twenty-two percent in the fall to twenty percent proficient in the winter. And in middle school, grades six through eight, fall proficiency from eighteen percent to winter proficiency at seventeen percent. Is that a normal decrease over the course of the year? What does that indicate?
Which are you looking at?
I'm on page seven of this document.
Is that this page?
Yes, the page.
That's it?
Yes, that's the page I'm looking at. So on the far right, it says fall proficiency and winter proficiency in green. And for the district total, district grades three through eight, it indicates twenty percent proficient in the fall and eighteen percent proficient in the winter. My question is that, and it indicates that that decreases from fall to winter for grades three through eight, three to five, and six to eight. Is that expected? It seems to me that we might expect that to go up.
Yes, the expectation is that, is that the percentage does go up. That is the expectation, yes.
And I would point out the same thing for the math proficiency rates. We see the same, the same numbers there, and on, I believe, page ten of that report.
So our scores are falling between?
Fall and winter.
Winter.
Well, I think that that is indicated in the data, but if you, if you look at the MAP scores, if you go back to the linking data, if you go back to the reports where it links the, which slide is that? Where you have the MAP?
Go up a few more.
Go back up a few slides. Okay. Here, there is a specific, there's research that's gone into mapping, meaning this is the projection of what these students would score if we took MAP today. So there is some, you know, there's some indication that there are some drops, but I think this is probably the best indicator of where we?
On the school level.
Yes, at the school level. So when you look at, at the, yeah, specific school level for each school, and also the overall report that's compared to MAP. If you look at Bates, for example, at the top, there's, last year, they are right now at eight percent. In 2017, math proficiency, they were at twelve percent. So at this point, halfway through the year, they're nearly at where they were at the end of school last year. So these are the linking studies that she mentioned that have been not conducted, not by the district, but by, you know, Renaissance and those other companies that do Lincoln studies to compare where we are if our students were to take the MAP. And so we do, we do, and that's one of the reasons we use this data to inform the work that we do, you know, now. So when we see those dips in the area of math, we have to identify what the reasons are in whatever area. We have to identify what those reasons are and make those adjustments accordingly.
So when we see the dips on a school level from fall to winter, we identify those schools specifically and reach out to them with extra resources, specialized plans?
Well, that's, that's, that's our goal, to, to reach out to those schools and provide some additional support to them. You know, for example, there may be a myriad of reasons as to why a school has a low performance in math. It might be, you know, for lack of a teacher, it may be, you know, some other areas. But again, we have to identify that, and we have to put mechanisms in place to support those, those students. So we use this to inform the work that we do going forward.
Sure. And I would say there are clear, there's clear evidence of success in some schools as they grow, and I would point that out as well. I just, it seems concerning overall to see a dip in proficiency at a district-wide level from fall to winter.
The other point of reference would be that it is cumulative, so the more skills that are taught within that time period, the more they're going to be tested on. And this is just a building of skills. So there still may be some skill gaps, but they're going to be tested on those specific skills at that time.
How does this compare to last year overall district-wide?
We've not done a comparison of the STAR data with what we've looked at with the MAP scores. When we, if you, are you meaning specifically STAR scores? Okay. What we did was we felt like a better indicator would be the MAP scores from 2017. So we added that column with our MAP scores from last year as a comparison to where we are using those Lincoln studies. We felt like, you know, the STAR is kind of not the bar, it's really the MAPs test. And so we look at MAP as the bar, and so we're comparing ourselves against, against MAP. We could, we could go back and do that. We could make the comparison to our STAR scores from the fall, from the spring, and from the winter. But again, for the purpose of guiding our instructional practice for the remainder of the year, we felt like MAP would be a better bar to set that against.
And so do we have any testing that's comparable to MAP? So that we could track that from, from fall to winter?
Yes, the summative assessment that we provided for you earlier, the summative, we have two benchmark assessments, and these are comprehensive assessments that cover all of the, the skills that are taught. And so it's a, and we provided that information in, I think, January board meeting. But again, that was a snapshot for half a year. We are in the process right now of conducting Benchmark Two. Once we complete Benchmark Two, then that would be a comparison of where our students would be if they took the MAP assessment at this point in the year. And so there'll be a clear indication of progress or lack of progress that was made from the first benchmark to the second benchmark.
So can the STAR data be used to assess our contractors?
It is, it is, yes. The STAR data can be used as a progress monitoring piece. It can. Also, the summative data, the formative data, all of our data pieces can be used collaboratively to determine if we're seeing progress within a, and even by the classroom, the reports that we saw for specific classrooms, because with, when we use outside vendors, again, they don't work with the entire district. They're working in specific classrooms, and the capacity is not there to work necessarily with the whole building. So if they're working with a specific teacher, we can clearly see if that teacher is improving, if the STAR data in that teacher's classroom, if the summative data in that teacher's classroom, the COAT data, we can look at that to determine what kind of progress is being made within that, that specific classroom. So the data allows us to dig that deep if we wanted to use that with our lead partners or vendors.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a very important observation, that we use all of the data possible to help us determine the quality of the services that our vendors are providing that meets the specific needs of our children and our teachers, and that they're aligned with what the district knows we have to do. We've got to find a way to do that. I've heard that we don't share the data with our vendors, but I'm hearing now that we can. It's not prohibitive. So that's something that the district leadership will likely do moving forward with our recommendation, that you begin to look at any testing that's going on of our children. STAR, whatever, MAP, whatever, any testing? Needs to have some accountability. The vendors who are working with our staff need to see that they are accountable as well, that we are, we are looking.
Yes, ma'am. The data, and again, the data is available with our, with our partners, because they are partners. And in order to, to help us and help schools, they have to, you know, we have to be transparent with what we're, what the data says. So we do, we can, and we, we do, and we'll make that available.
And we have that capacity in-house with current staff who have the capacity to provide useful information like this to our teachers and our staff.
Yes. And just, this is just, this is just STAR for the sake of time. We, we can provide these kind of reports. This level of reporting is available through our formative assessments as well as our ATI, which is our benchmark assessments. So the model is that we train interventionist teachers within the building so that they can pull these, so it's real-time. They don't have to wait on someone to push this out. Once they finish testing, they can go into the system and generate these reports. There is a lead person at every building that's been trained. Then there are teachers also in buildings that have been trained that have the capacity to generate those reports. We have support within the central office if there's a person leaves that was your contact person for testing. We have someone available to train. Principals have the knowledge of how to pull all of these reports as well. So we have real-time data available to, to teachers and to administrators.
Thank you. My last question, it's regarding forecasting for our spring testing. Based on this data, what's your forecast for how well our children will improve?
So based on this data, we're, we're very close to where we were at the end of spring 2017. It is our expectation and our hope that with interventions, now with actually taking these reports and providing interventions on those specific skills and gaps that the students, that we see that the students have, then the students will have growth. That, that is the key piece, making certain that key personnel are providing interventions within those specific skills, skill gaps to those students so that we will see growth. But at this point, we are where we were at the, at the end of spring last year, so we anticipate growth.
And I think our best indicator would be the Lincoln study, the link, the MAP score to the proficiency score, because the system tells us that if your students took MAP today, this is where they would be. And that, this is, this is extensive work goes into that. I think, again, there's no, you know, silver bullet, but again, this is the indication of, of where our students would be. And so this is kind of what we, what we use to decide if we need to accelerate in certain schools, if we need, if we have, if one school is being successful, we may want to move our resources to somewhere else. So again, this data provides us with what we need to inform the work moving forward over the next two months, so that we can really focus on, on where the gaps are and where the skills deficiencies are.
Are all students taking the STAR?
STAR is from three through ten, correct?
Actually, first grade.
Oh, first, okay, first through.
First grade, tenth grade.
Okay. But we test, we test three.
We test three through eight for the MAP. The MAP outlook is just for those tested grades, third through eighth grade.
Okay. And it's all students in first grade?
Yes, all, yes.
So just to be clear?
Kindergarten has a readiness assessment, but it's not STAR. It is MCAS. It's taken through the state portal, and we also can use STAR early literacy for kindergarten. But for STAR, it is grades one through ten.
But just to be clear, I'm looking at STAR reading proficiency rates, winter 2018, all students grades three through eight proficiency outlook report. I don't know what number this is. But if we read in blue, area one, total, eighteen sixty-four students, and then we read across on that line of blue, is that number in the last, second to the last column under percent proficient?
The number is missing because I did not want?
No, no, no. The number under percent proficient that is listed in blue.
For the winter.
Yes. Is that the percent of students in area one who are proficient in reading?
Yes, ma'am.
And can you project that that percent will rise? Or, I understand you haven't done the MAP apparently, or there's no MAP projection for 2018?
When you say projection, this is the projection based on the most current STAR data. So this projects how students would do at the end of the year. Now, we're continuing with that projection because you still have a few more months. But if you're talking, you're talking about this percentage, thirteen percent now, I dare not say an increase or decrease. I can say the expectation and the hopes based on the fact that we have a few more months to intervene with students.
And for clarity, Dr. Harrison, I'm sorry, I didn't, what, can you tell me what you're asking?
Trying to be hopeful that our scores would rise this spring, our MAP scores.
Yes, ma'am. We feel, we feel that the data is trending in a direction that will, we can see that there will be growth. Again, we've, we've looked at this data. Proficiency is an area that we have to continue to work on. The reality is that our proficiency numbers are, are not as high as we would like them to be, and that, that's a, you know, that's for a variety of reasons. But with growth, we have an opportunity to? But, uh, with growth, we have an opportunity to, uh, to meet, uh, our mark. We, we believe, uh, well, we don't, we, we're only 93 points, 92 points from a C. And we aspire to make that leap and, and that's within, uh, within our reach. When we look at some of the, the things that we're doing and some of the targeted, uh, focuses that we have on specific schools. So we are, we do know that of course, uh, D is the next step, but we believe that 92 points is not, uh, something that is, is, is unattainable for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, uh, board, this is just, uh, what we provided, some of the reports, uh, there were some, some questions about the specificity of the reports and so that's, some of that information was added. And I apologize if you all didn't have the student reports, but what we provided to you and your board material was a high-level overview of the summative data. And so those reports were just to show some of the, uh, how specific we can get when we, when, uh, how, when this information goes down to the school level. Uh, just, um, just a couple more things I would like to, uh, just, uh, we have some principals here. I'd like to recognize our principals, I asked principals that are here to please stand, uh, be recognized. I'd like to, so, help me celebrate our principals. I'd like to publicly recognize our principals for the hard work that they do each and every day that a lot, many times goes unnoticed, uh, so again, we appreciate our, our principals.
Thank you for that because it's always good to see principals and teachers here to, to get your input. I know it's extra double duty and a long day for teachers and principals. So thank you for joining us and we appreciate any feedback that you have to offer.
And just the last, uh, item, just, um, we always want to update our community on our corrective action plan. So, uh, Dr. Merritt, if you could just, you know, where we are, uh, as it relates to approval on corrective action plan.
All right. Good evening, board, uh, Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison. Where we are, of course, we submitted our corrective action plan to the Mississippi Department of Education. We anticipate approval at the State Board of Education meeting, uh, this month. We are still aggressively working within the district to make sure that we are compliant in all areas. Uh, specifically what standard leaders are doing now is one, reviewing policies that are, that are related to their standards. And then they are doing some internal monitoring, uh, as it relates to their standard. So that's, uh, where we are, uh, with our corrective action plan.
Thank you. And just one note before we, uh, before I complete, and just wanted to make a note about the data. Uh, we did, we, we didn't take into account that we missed almost a month of school as well when those students, uh, when we tested. So that, that loss, uh, was there. So that is, uh, you know, to be considered as well. So even with that, we still feel, felt like we're, we're moving in the right direction, but we did have an extended period of time, uh, that we missed that would, if not for that, students would have had more time as well. So, uh, that completes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, that's very helpful, Dr. Murray. And Dr. Merritt, excuse me, thank you for your update. Item seven, information action items. Item A, the schools at risk action plans. Dr. Murray?
Good afternoon, board. The administration, uh, is recommending that the board, board approval on the school at-risk action plans uh, in an effort to be, uh, compliant with the school improvement procedures for schools at risk. Uh, in an effort to collaboratively develop school at-risk plans, uh, that address the eight school turnaround principles, school board members, site council, teachers, principals, uh, worked to craft, uh, plans for turnaround, uh, for the turnaround principles. With support of MDE, school, uh, improvement coaches, JPS improvement personnel, assistant superintendents and other district personnel and the superintendent, uh, we, uh, have worked to provide these plans and we're a- asking at this time for your approval. Again, uh, as you all remember, we had extensive, uh, school improvement visits with MDE. As a part of that process, they, uh, outlined that we would be required to submit a s- schooling, uh, at-risk plans for each school, uh, with stakeholder feedback. And once those plans were complete, that they would come to the board for, uh, board approval. And this is, uh, that point where they will come to the board for board approval. Once those plans have been approved, uh, then we will, uh, submit tho- those, uh, signature sheets uh, and plans, uh, through upload to, uh, the MDE. And then we will start having monthly, monthly meetings, uh, where school, uh, at-risk meetings, where different schools will come in and actually provide an update to the board each month. So, uh, once we're approved, then the next board meeting, we will start that process. So we're asking for the board's, uh, consideration of this item.
Thank you. Uh, board members, do you have questions or comments for Dr. Murray regarding the schools at risk action plans?
Is there a deadline to submit the plan to?
Yes, actually the deadline was initially on the 23rd, uh, of February. And we, um, we had some conversation and we needed some extended time to provide some additional feedback. So we did request until this board meeting. So it, it is, um, we're at a point now where they're due.
And the timeline for these improvements is?
Well, the, the timeline for the.
So this is the plan and the plan should be implemented over?
Yes, well, the, the, the idea is that, uh, that the plans will, will yield positive results on our MAP data. So again, that's, you know, this year.
This year.
Yes, that we, there will be some, some progress toward the goals. Again, this process, you know, we, the timeline that we provided was the timeline that was given to us by MDE. So, uh, again, in a perfect situation, the, you know, we've, would have had several months to have started the plan. But at this point, this is where we are. But again, last year, the schoo- the schools that are in year two, we also attended some of those meetings. And so, um, there was a year-two process for those schools. So again, we would hope that we would not have to go into year two because these schools would not be F next year. But I assume that the same process would follow, that there would be a year-two if, because the schools from last year are using the, the plans that they had from, from last year. So ideally, you know, we, they would want to see progress, uh, toward the goal of moving out of F status.
To that question, I took particular interest in reading about the schools in Ward Five so I could speak with my very active constituents in Ward Five. And, uh, the target date for one of our schools, it's all, uh, May 4th, 2018. And we're, MAP testing is prior to that time. Is that correct, the spring MAP testing?
Well, it's a window, it's a window of time. MAP testing opens on April 16th and goes through May.
May 18th?
Yes. It's a window of time, so that.
See, that's why we need principals here. Thank you. So, um, the, the school that I'm looking at out of, uh, Ward Five then, we're starting now, well, last month. And, um, this is ongoing and so by May 5th, our target date, then that does give an opportunity to see some, uh, potential growth on those MAP tests. Okay, great. Well, that's good to know. Oh, I had one other question and, and because the board did participate in, um, giving feedback regarding these plans. Could you talk a little bit more about, uh, the support that district leadership gives to these identified schools as they develop their plans? What's, what's the protocol there and, and the balance between district support and leadership and what, uh, is, bubbles up locally?
With, with, with this, uh, well, again, we provide, um, we're, we're available to provide support for, uh, for this process. Uh, Dr. Evans, in her absence, and I'd like to thank Dr. Evans for her leadership, uh, Shanelle Evans for her work, uh, with, um, schools at risk. She provided the training, uh, collaborated with the MDE, uh, worked to make sure that all the schools, uh, completed the webinars, that we understood the process because again, the timeline was very short. Uh, she pushed the information out, uh, so that we could, um, could make sure that all of the schools, uh, were aware of the process. And so, uh, she is the point person for schools at risk, uh, my designee. But we provide, all of the area superintendents, as, as well as, uh, Dr. Merritt, uh, Dr. Evans are available to support, uh, the school at-risk process. Again, because what we, what we try to do now is we try not to do plans in isolation. All of our action plans, title plans, school at-risk plans, 10003 plans, are all coordinated such that we're moving in the same direction. And so we are available to support, uh, our schools in all of the, the, um, development of plans, implementation. Uh, so we, we do have staff that's readily available to support that process. And we're available through, uh, this process as well as to provide technical assistance.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the board?
Um, Dr. Murray, could you speak to the involvement of the Department of Education, um, in the development of the plans?
Yes, uh, the Department of Education has been very, uh, very open and, uh, supportive of this process. Again, uh, Dr. Evans worked, uh, very closely with, uh, Ms. Robbins, Dr. Robinson and, uh, Ms., Dr. Palmer, very closely, uh, on, uh, they allowed us to get the extension, you know, when, when we needed additional time. They worked with us, they were very cooperative, uh, in helping us through that process. If we had specific questions, uh, they would turn those questions around. So they have been, uh, very supportive of this process and, and have helped us along the way and, uh, have been great partners in this process.
And, and what would, what are the, what's the next phase in the process? So we'll submit these to MDE, the Department of Education, and, and then what are the next, uh, steps?
The next steps are the monthly, uh, briefings to the board. So from the action plans, we should see on a monthly basis, uh, the schools will come, well, because of the number of schools, we'll have half at one meeting, half at the next. And that's something that we would need to talk about as a board. Uh, last year, we did the, uh, assistant superintendents did the overview and principals were, uh, were present. Uh, and that was a mechanism so it didn't take, you know, two hours. Uh, but again, that was the, that was the will at that time. So again, we can look at that model or a model of individual schools coming up, but it would be about 10 schools per board meeting. And so there's a specific, uh, template that we would follow. Again, that could be done by the assistant superintendents for their specific schools with the schools present if there are specific questions or individual schools coming up. But it's, it's mandatory that schools do, uh, this, uh, report once a month. And so that'll start, if, uh, if it's the board, board's will that we approve this tonight, the very next board meeting will start presenting, um, updates. And we've not gotten any feedback yet on the, the second set of schools, the, uh, schools that are in year two. That information, the specifics on that process has not been provided yet from MDE.
And what's the total number of our schools at risk and our low-performing schools?
We have 20, um, help me with that, uh, Dr. Merritt. We have 20, I think, uh, that are schools at risk. And then we have, um, 15 schools at risk and 14 low performing.
Thank you.
And are the schools already implementing these plans?
Yes, the school, the schools are implementing the plans, uh, even in the process of developing the plans. Uh, we, we, some of the practices that you'll see, some of the best practices are, are outlined, uh, they've, they've started in schools already.
Other questions or comments, board? Do I hear a motion to approve these schools at risk action plans?
So moved.
It's been moved in properly. Second, that we approve the schools at risk action plans as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. Our schools at risk action plans are approved and, uh, once again, we thank our principals and administrative leadership for ushering this process through. And we are looking forward to increased growth for all of our children under your very capable leadership. Item B, approval of recommendation to close Brown, French, George and Woodville Heights schools. Dr. Murray?
Good evening. Uh, the admini- the administration, uh, is recommending the closing of French Elementary, George Elementary, Brown Elementary and Woodville Heights Elementary for the 2018-19 school year. Uh, the district will continue to collaborate with stakeholders over the next few months to determine how buildings can be transformed, uh, into community assets. The recommendation is supported by the following rationale. Uh, the increased cost of maintaining aging buildings, school ar- architectural design, combined with decreased state funding and a decline in student enrollment have led the district to conduct a feasibility study on the consolidation and closure of schools. The district looked at schools with approximately 200 students or less or with costly infrastructure repairs. As part of the district study, the district researched project projected cost savings, transportation, staffing, food service and exceptional education services. As a result, the following schools are being, uh, met the qualification for consolidation and are being recommended at this time. Brown Elementary School currently has 193 students, 13 teachers, 23 support staff. French has 200 students, 16 teachers, 21 support staff. George Elementary, 129 students, 11 teachers, 11 support staff. And Woodville Heights, uh, has cost, uh, for repairs approaching almost $4 million. So at this time, we're asking, uh, for the board's approval or the board's consideration for the closing or consolidation of George, French, Woodville Heights and Brown.
Thank you. Board members, do you have questions or comments?
Um, Dr. Harrison, let me just say, first of all, Dr. Murray, I, I want to thank you and your team for, um, going about this work, uh, uh, in, in preparation for making this decision. Um, the board, we held community meetings, uh, the board was, had members present at three of the four community meetings. Um, and the one school where we did not, we invited community members to tour the school with us. Um, board members walked through every building, um, met with principals. Um, and also, uh, Mr. McCracken was available through all of it. Um, Ms. McCracken, I really appreciate the time you took to walk us through and show us, um, the infrastructure needs that are facing us. You know, we also went to the schools where the students would potentially be going, uh, as well. Again, wanted to, to take this decision very seriously. What you see when you walk through the schools is really a paradox. On one hand, you see students who are walking in lines, who are.
Happy.
Happy, who are listening to their teachers, reading them books. Um, you see them, um, you know, it's a learning environment. And that is, um, the paradox is the backdrop, which is rusty pipes, buckling floors. Not always, but in many instances, facilities that, um, need a lot of work at a time when the resources just aren't there. Um, so given current enrollment levels within the Jackson Public School District, maintaining the existing number of aging facilities, in my opinion, is no longer financially viable. And, um, Dr. Harrison, uh, I support this recommendation and look forward to using the next six to 12 months to partner with key stakeholders in the city and in the district to look for ways to turn these spaces into community assets.
Thank you for your remarks, Dr. Sivak. And I want to, um, echo his remarks again. The board took this very seriously. We are all JPS strong here. And, and what struck me so much as well was what incredible job our teachers and principals are doing in such a challenging, uh, environments within which they are required to work and, uh, under which too many of our children have to suffer. So this whole effort is about finding a way to meet, better meet all of our children's needs, to better support all of our teachers. And to meet one of our, uh, goals is to offer and provide a safe learning. learning environment for all of our children. So this is clearly a difficult situation. I also want to echo a piece that Dr. Sivak said that in discussing these options, it's very clear that the district must work triple time to come up with plans to make these facilities assets to our communities. It's not an easy decision, and we appreciate everyone's effort in helping us to arrive at the best decision for our district. Other comments or questions from the board?
I too would like to concur with Dr. Sivak's comments. This is incredibly difficult. It's incredibly difficult for these communities. And as Dr. Hairston has said, I think we all have to be committed to how these spaces can become assets for these communities. But with all of the information and the data that's presented, I don't, I think that this is the right course of action.
Hearing no further comments from my board colleagues. Do I hear a motion to approve the recommendation to close Brown, French, George, and Woodville Heights?
Madam President, based on the report from Dr. Murray, I move that we will accept the report and compliment them for the work that they did in providing the information that outlines to each of us the need to do so.
It's been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve these recommendations regarding school consolidation. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item passes. Item C, approval of the fiscal year 17 Title III English Language Acquisition Program application. Dr. Merritt?
All right, good evening again, board. The administration is recommending to the board to approve the fiscal year 18 Title III English Language Acquisition Program. This is a sub grant that is offered by the Mississippi Department of Education. And to be in compliance with a citation that was in the corrective action plan, standard 17.6 federal programs citations G4, and that we needed to provide more professional development for our teachers to be better trained in supporting our English language learners. Not only for those students, those teachers that serve them, but all teachers within the school are now required to be trained so they can fully support them in really becoming proficient according to what the, as the state measures it. As you all know, that is, as for now, is our English language learners will possibly count in the upcoming accountability model. So it's important that we do provide them the necessary support. Again, this is a sub grant that the Mississippi Department of Education offered us.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Board, do we have questions or comments?
I do, Dr. Hairston. I see that there are six schools listed where we have English learner schools. Could you speak a little bit about the efforts of what's taking place in those schools to accommodate and create a learning environment in those schools for our English?
We have six sites that are located pretty much by area, north, central, and south, depending on the division of the school. So what's happening there is each of those schools, they do have an English, a teacher who can really support those students, and some of them have a parent professional to help support them as well. But the move is, those students not only see that teacher, but when they go to the additional classes that they may, to additional content area classes, that those teachers be able to one, understand them and be able to serve them instructionally as well. So it's kind of a shift in the instructional process and what is expected in service to our ELL students. So it's no longer with them, you know, spending one, the whole day with one teacher, but they want them exposed, and it's more so the inclusion model, so to speak, with the students and all teachers. This is what this grant specifically focuses on, is professional development to all teachers, not just the English language teacher, but all teachers within that building that touch those students, so they can have the necessary training in order to help those students to be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Remind me of how many English language learners we have?
So as of now, 366, according to our records.
And they're dispersed across X number of schools?
Most of them are in our sites. And of course, when parents enroll, they complete a survey. And they can opt for services or opt out and just attend a school that's in their area. And so some choose to do that. And so most of them are in the six sites, but there are a few that are at other sites.
Thank you.
And what are the, is it, are there multiple language, languages that are being? Do we have students who speak multiple languages? Or is there one, for example, is Spanish the dominant second language?
Spanish is more dominant. But I think today, as I was reviewing the IMSA's report, we have approximately eight languages from Arabic, French, yeah, Jakarta, I mean, it's an array. But I think I counted eight different languages that are spoken within the district, well, students.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I just, I have one. I see that in the budget, there's $15,000 allocated to other purchase services. What is, what is other purchase services? I mean, you can be general.
Okay, it's just instructional support, instructional materials. We felt the need to budget for that as we are expanding the process. We know that there will be a need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. Other comments or questions from the board? We appreciate your work around this. We want all of our children to feel welcome and supported in all of our schools. So this is an important item that needs our attention. With no further comments or questions, do I hear a motion to approve the Title III English Language Acquisition Program application? Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved the Title III English Language Acquisition Application. Item D, approval of contract with McPherson and Jacobson to conduct our superintendent search. Honorable Dorian Turner.
Board members, following up from your meeting last Thursday, you selected McPherson and Jacobson as the consultant to conduct the superintendent search. But you directed that you wanted the contract to be brought from before you at today's meeting, so you'd have a time, a chance to review it. I had some back and forth with Dr. Jacobson, the principal. And so as of late this afternoon, you have what I think is the final version for execution. Since I sent the draft of you, the draft contract to you on Monday, Dr. Luckett raised a concern that I think several of you had expressed on Thursday about the composition of the consulting team that would be leading the search for the district. And so kind of the compromise of the language that we came to was that the consultant team would be subject to approval by the Board of Trustees. So the only change between the contract that you received Monday and the one that you have before you at your desk is the first bullet point under Phase One. And it says, establish and assign a group of consultants to be approved by the district's Board of Trustees to work with the district through its search process. Other than that, it's the exact same as what you got before. But what I would contemplate and suggested to Dr. Jacobson is that he would send to you the names and resumes of the consultants that he's decided upon presenting. And once the board had seen that and signed off on those, they would begin the search process. So you've got that contract before you. It's the same except as in that one respect that I just mentioned.
Thank you, Attorney Turner. I do recall us also asking for a deliverable regarding working
Yeah, that language was already in there.
Yeah, I couldn't find it, I just wanted to make sure.
The additional terms, it's on.
Item five, additional terms and conditions. Remember, we talked about aligning with the Fahrenheit group that's working with the Better Together Commission?
Yes, that's the second paragraph on, under number five on page, I think it's five of six. That was in there originally, and I had mentioned that when I initially talked to him. He had no problem with it.
Great, thank you. I, just briefly glancing, I couldn't find it. And I want to remind our board members that we had asked for that, and you did include it. Do I have any questions? Do we have any questions regarding this proposed contract? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this contract with McPherson and Jacobson to conduct our superintendent search. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we approve this motion. Thank you so much. Item eight, consent agenda items finance, approval of accounts payable and activity fund claims. Ms. Sherilyn Miller, CFO.
Thank you, Dr. Hairston, Dr. Murray, members of the board. I present to you two items for consent agenda items finance. Item A is approval of accounts payable and activity fund claims for February 10th through 23rd of 2018, and also the approval of various donations as listed in your board material.
Thank you so much. Board members, do we have questions or comments for Ms. Miller?
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda items under finance.
A and B.
Is there an explanation for B as well? Or, and I may have, you may have given it.
B is the approval of the donations. You collapsed them. Thank you, sir. It's been moved that we approve consent agenda items A and B. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved those items A and B under finance.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item nine, consent agenda items, approval of the 1,003A school improvement plan between the MDE and JPS. Dr. Merritt?
All right, good evening again. The administration recommends approval of the 1003A school improvement funds for the following schools, Blackburn, Boyd, Brinkley, Callaway, Cardoza, Chastain, Forest Hill, Galloway, Hardy, Lake, Lanier, Peoples, Powell, Cywell Span, Timberline, Van Winkle, Whitten, and Wingfield. And I'll just give a little bit of an overview. I'm sorry. So schools that are given 1003A school improvement funds, this is done in two ways. You have two categories. You have priority schools and you have focus schools. Priority schools, and I give you the definition of schools that meet priority status. They are Title I schools performing below the fifth percentile in the state. And it's any high school with a graduation rate at or below 60%. And the definition for focus school is, it's a Title I school performing above the fifth percentile, but below the 16th percentile in the state. Or it's a Title I school receiving an accountability rating of an F that's above the 16th percentile in the state. So according to the federal model, a priority school, priority schools, the district must take 20% of its total Title I allocation. So the allocation for Jackson Public Schools is approximately $17 million. The district must take 20% of that money and allocate towards the improvement of priority schools, pardon me. And so what those schools are responsible for doing, they must meet with their school leadership teams and stakeholders and develop an action plan of success. And at these meetings, the data drives the plan. Based on when they, as they review the data, they determine as a leadership team what will help them be successful in order to move their school out of whatever got them in priority or focus status. The focus school, 10% of the school's allocation. So once we allocate the off-the-top money for priority schools, then focus schools, and I believe it's five or 10%, and I'll verify and let you know before the evening is over, of that, school's allocation must be set aside to improve its current standing, to move them out of that status. So they have the same responsibility as a priority school in meeting with their leadership team and community stakeholders in order to develop a plan to help them move out of that status. It's a very intense plan because it has to be results oriented. Their plan is done in what we call MCAPs. And that's the plan where all school-wide plans, the district plan is in there, and it speaks to how we're going to move schools. And their plan aligns with the goals that are, that the district have set. They go in there, and that's what you have, what was uploaded. Their plans fall under the district goals, and they speak to how they will improve their schools. So that's kind of of an overview of it. And though, I think those, the principals here that are remaining are the ones that have taken time to develop these plans. We had a webinar, we received the notification late January. There was a webinar on February 9th. And then I had a follow-up meeting with MDE on February 15th. And then the initial due date of the plans were the 28th. And of course, they were gracious enough to give us a deadline because after we met on the 15th, they needed time to meet with their school leadership team and stakeholders. And so they basically did a great job in writing their plans, and I commend them on this, within a two to three day period, so that we can get them uploaded for board review. So I'll, if there are any questions, I will take them at this time.
Board members, do we have any questions? I'll yield to my colleagues. I do have one or two.
Dr. Merritt, can you speak to the role that the district played in reviewing these plans and making sure that they meet the goals that are set out by the district for improvement in these schools?
Yes, sir. So what the district's responsibility, what we do is make sure, one, that they are, these plans are guided by, they have turnaround principles in them. And that's the same as school at risk. All of them must address, there are eight turnaround principles. And under those turnaround principles, there are some indicators. Priority schools have to address 14 of the four indicators and the turnaround principles. And I believe focus schools have to address eight of the 14 principles. And so what, the role of the district is basically to guide and make sure And so what, the role of the district is basically to guide and make sure that, one, we don't really tell them how to do it, but just verifying what they do is evidence-based. With ESSA, it's important that everything is evidence-based. And basically, when there's, when, when you hear the term evidence-based, when they select a strategy of whatever they're going to use to say, I'm going to improve my school, they have researched it, and it has been determined that that strategy, or if it's a program or whatever they're doing, has been impactful and showed some promising evidence with students just like theirs, or close to it. And so that's the role of the district, just to verify that, one, their funding is in line, they have allocated it appropriately, and that, two, they have addressed the, the turnaround principles in there, and, and make sure that they are able to implement it.
And with the plans that have been presented to us tonight, the district has gone through that due diligence already and made sure that they align with those goals?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is this a yearly plan?
Right. So let me speak to that, and good question. So this is their second plan that they have had to write this year. They're lagging. The fir-, they received a pot of money, I believe, in October or November, so they had to develop a plan which was really for seventeen, and they received the money in school year eighteen. So they had to develop a plan to expend those funds and improve their schools with that. Then the monies that they have now, that, and the plans that you're looking at, is for school year eighteen, this current year. However, the department did allow them to say that this plan can run from March of this year to September thirtieth of next year. And so what you see is their plans will address pretty much an academic year.
Next year, 2019, or next academic year?
Next year, September 2019, academic year.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry. Is there a deadline to submit the plans to MDE?
Pardon me?
Is there a deadline to submit the plans to MDE for approval?
Yes, ma'am. They must be submitted to MDE by March fifteenth.
Dr. Merritt, how many priority schools do we have?
So priority schools, we have thirteen priority schools and six focus schools.
And do these schools overlap with our SAR schools and our low-performing schools?
I know with the low-performing schools, some of, there's some overlap. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that some of these schools are gonna have a low, no, but the low-performing didn't have to do the SARS?
Right. I don't think they, you have received any feedback from that, but mostly, all of these schools are either in priority or focus school status, and I believe that each of the low-performing schools fall in, in one of these categories.
So those schools are gonna have to have two plans?
If I, if I could address, that, that's one of the issues, the, by, by us utilizing the turnaround principles. It keeps it aligned.
Right.
So even, you know, not all of the principals are required in priority or focus, but those principals that are required, they are aligned to those in SARS or low-performing. And so that, that goes back to the earlier conversation about trying to make sure that all of our plans are in line, so we not just have things on the shelf that we're not actually utilizing.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that, because it is crafted around the turnaround school standards.
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you for making that clear to me. Other questions or comments? From the board? Oh, the SAR schools.
Yes, sir.
Give monthly reports that you'll share with the board, or we'll have some update in that regard. Given the timeline, will we have monthly reports regarding what's going on with these ten oh three?
I'm sure that's the pleasure of the board.
We can provide that if, if the board.
Please do. And we'd love, we'd love to hear from the principals, too.
Yes, ma'am. We can definitely provide that.
All the questions or comments, board members? Do I hear a motion to approve ten oh three A, the school improvement plan between MDE and JPS?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Yeah, to, to include the reports, but thank you, I know you'll do that. All in favor signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, we have approved consent agenda item A. Item ten, consent agenda items, approval of staff personnel matters. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you.
Good evening.
We're not mad at you.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, Ms. Lyons.
Good evening to Dr. Murray, Dr. Hairston, members of the board. The administration asks for the approval of staff personnel matters as listed in board material.
Thank you, board members. The materials were submitted prior to. Do you have questions or comments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to accept approval of staff personnel matters?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the staff personnel matters as presented by Ms. Lyons. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work. Item eleven, other business?
Just one quick item, Board President. I mentioned earlier that we will start, the board approved the at-risk plan, so we'll start presenting next board meeting. Just wanted to make sure that it was okay for the model that we used in the past, or if the board wanted us to make an adjustment, meaning the assistant superintendents can provide the report if principals present, if they have any questions, or is it the will that the actual principals present? Because it would be fifteen, eight and eight each board meeting. So again, whichever the will of the board, we could do that. Or if you all need to think about it, but we'll have to be prepared for the next board meeting to present, as per the state's requirement.
Yeah, would you give us just a minute to, and, and we'll get back fairly quickly? I, you know, I like hearing from principals and teachers, but I, in the interest of time, that might not be the best thing to do, but in the board, can we just think about it?
We'll send you something in writing, and just let us know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other business? I would like to enter into the record, and I probably should have thought about doing this at the very beginning, because it wasn't appropriate, but I want to remind everyone about our Better Together Commission meetings. Just for public information, Dr. Sevack serves on the Better Commission, Better Together Commission, but the commission has announced their monthly meetings. I know we all have been concerned to know when the commission would meet and have a regular meeting time, and I would like to share that the Better Together Commission meetings will be held the last Thursday of each month. They will be held at the Margaret Walker Alexander Library on Robinson Road, across from Westland Plaza, near the intersection of Robinson and Ellis Avenue. The next one will be held March twenty-ninth. So every last Thursday of the month at four fifteen at the Alexander Library. We really hope that we'll have a full house at each one of these meetings, so please share with your constituents. We, principals, if you've got some extra time on a Thursday evening, everyone, we'd love to have your input. The commission would love to have your input. May I say that, Dr. Sevack? Any other business? Do I hear a motion to consider to hold an executive session? Hearing none, move along. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved, I hear a second, and properly seconded that we adjourned. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, all opposed? Signify by saying no. Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.